I don't know if you can hear me, but we can't hear you.
Are that better?
Yes, thank you.
So to restate, you know, we we honor the artwork of our students in in our council chambers each month. And so it gets changed up. And so the we've got some awesome art on high school today. And I'm going to read off the names of our artists and, you know, and honor them. We just we're very lucky to have them being and providing us with this with all of this stuff to look at and all the reminders of the great art programs that we have. So I'll read off each name, then you know, at the end, we can throw any accolades out that we want. Michaela Marchese, Savannah Davis, Cora Collins, Tobias Dooley, Kyle Vandeventer, Maddie Laplan, Bella Bagnol, Elizabeth Foy, Sophia Leach, Koby Ellis, Sulan Zhang, Izzy Charbonneau, Tyler Dujnowski, Anna Kaminowski, Ruby Graham, Cassidy Winter, Gabriella Travado, Ariane Dongaire, Sky Paradomo, Gino Dotelli, Benji Critton, Maura Klinowski, and Whitney Singer. So thank you very much to all of our artists for providing us with this great artwork to adorn our meetings. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any suggestions for additions or subtractions from the agenda? Just one note, new business item L four was on there as a possibility. Senator Gordon's schedule would not allow him to come tonight, so we'll try to schedule him for the next one. All right, can I get an a motion for the approval of the February 28th minutes? So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Dr. Will, before we get to the vote, can you let Dana in?
Yes.
All right, Dana, can you hear us? Dana, can you hear us? Go ahead, go ahead, Devoe, Jayden.
Aye.
Reenie.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
All right, Jen.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
And one more time, Dana? Yeah, she's on, but she's not. No. All right. So the motion is approved. Moving on to public participation. Members of the Town Board of Education, welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during the points of information section. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting setting. So if you would like to speak, if you are online, please raise your virtual hand and we will alternate between online and the large crowd currently in place. Anybody? All right, seeing none in either place, we will move on. Mr. Secretary. Or somebody, oh, my apologies, thank you. Kate.
Hi, I'm sorry, I was just getting on. Kate Howard Bender, 103 Goose Lane. First of all, thank you all for passing that budget. And I'm excited to see that it is relatively whole in the town manager's budget. So my request of you fine folks is to advocate with the town council to try to make sure that we use some of our balances and our reserves and whatnot so we can kind of balance out the tax implications. So thank you, and that's all I have to say. Be well.
Thank you, Kate. Anybody else? So please raise your virtual hand. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on this time. Mr. Secretary.
Yeah, we had nine emails come in in the last two weeks, four of whom were concerning the budget, existing budget cuts as well as additional concerns. One of them was also a student privacy issue and SATs, the recent thing that came out about that. One was a drum donation. And one was an email about the senior center and team collaboration. One was about student privacy rights. And the last one was about perception and interaction between the town council and board of ed during their joint meeting. Those were the nine emails that we got.
Thank you, sir. Points of information, anybody from the board like to speak? Last chance for now. Nice. Hearing none, your representatives, how are you ladies doing?
We're good, it's been a while, so we have a lot to say. Um, all right, so DECA states were last Wednesday. I know you've all probably heard some of the statistics. I'm gonna read them again. So we had 36 students that went to compete, 17 medals that were top six in their category, and 12 students were top three. And they qualified for ICDC, which is the International DECA Competition in Anaheim, California. The international qualifiers include, in first place, Wilte's Honor, Samir Katsal, Alyssa Bogus, and Josh Reed and Sulan Zhang. Second place, Max Mulhouser. And third place, Garrett Baum, Sophia Kennicam, Julia Bullier, Amelia Lu Jin, Juliet Carrie, Vera Shag. And some of our non-international qualifying medalists include Eli Burrell, Amanda Itsu, Isabella Mulhouser, and Hillary Grant, and Jocelyn House. Additionally, Ashby Shaw and Ashby McCowan will be going to Nationals to present the school store.
So last week, we had those two half days and those were for parent teacher conferences.
Um, more on business. So today, we had a Town Talk speaker as a part of our Town Talk speaker series. I did not attend, I heard she was wonderful. Tomorrow, we have a Business Pathways Field Trip to Mokegan Sun to learn about hospitality and marketing. And on the 22nd of March, we have the Innovation Challenge at CCSU, where students will compete in teams to market a business and learn how to market business.
Also, on the 20th, which is next Wednesday, the juniors have our SATs and it is a half day for all other grades in the high school, I believe. And also, our Hunchback of Notre Dame tickets are on sale. The performances are Thursday, Friday, and there's two on Saturday. And today, we did a preview for the high schoolers. And that included the eighth graders, which is something they haven't done since pre-COVID, so that was really nice. March 19th, in the library, there's gonna be a presentation from the owner of All American Driving School about getting your license and driving anxiety. And you can register with Mrs. Alford.
And finally, the NHS blood drive is tomorrow from 7:30 to 12:30. So if you're signed up for that, drink a lot of water, eat a lot of food, and
Eat greens.
Eat greens, and be healthy and safe. And that is all, any questions?
No, but congratulations to Audrey and all the other DECA students going to Nationals soon.
Nothing. I could talk about DECA forever. Credit to all the students, credit to Mrs. Bridge, credit to everybody who's involved with DECA. I never, I never, DECA never fails to amaze you. So I just a huge smile on my face, so that's all, thank you. Thank you, Dana. All right, thank you. Committee and liaison reports. On the curriculum, have you met since?
We meet next week.
All right, communication?
Yeah, we met, we're going to be reviewing a survey in the next committee meeting next week. So that's co-curricular, wanted to meet. So we'll be getting community input, so that'll be coming down the pipe for next week.
This is the survey you're gonna put out?
Yes. Yeah, it hasn't been done yet. So the topics, questions, survey will be put together next week. We'll have an open listening session if anybody wants to say a few words.
So, great. Dana, did I call you, Nate? FFC?
We met, not as a group, that's next Wednesday, but today we just, Walt and I met to solidify the agenda. There was a special edition, so probably an update next week on that. So we tweaked it a little bit, so. More to come next week at our board meeting next week. At the next week.
Your committee meeting is next week. And then, not to leave anybody out.
No, there are no contracts and negotiations at this time.
All right, moving on, then, chairpersons report. You know, and that will be promised, or even, you know.
Why is that funny? Still, I used to say like, I promise I'm gonna be crying.
You know, we've done a lot of talking during the budget season and all through the year about, you know, amazing staff and, you know, amazing school. But I just wanted to throw one quick story, you know, as I was walking my daughter out of Birch Grove today and she points at one of the custodians that's way down the hall and talks about that guy right there always makes me laugh. Apparently, he's, he knows her name and says hi to her and makes her giggle every time she walks by, which just lit up her face as she's talking with, you know, talking about this, this individual. And, you know, it struck me walking up to the car that, you know, it's that complete package that we have from the teachers to the admins to the parents, all the way to the custodians and the lunchroom staff. Each one of them is doing a very special thing and adding to that overall experience. So I want to make sure that, you know, if that gentleman is listening or Dr. Willis to you and your staff, my appreciation, you know, thank you. Every little giggle she has just makes my That being said, see, we'll move on. Superintendent's report, nothing there. Then once we want to do business, Dr. Willis, I want monthly financial report.
Yes, so, so as you know, we give a financial report at the beginning of every month. This month, the budget balance is $18,185 for 0.04% of the budget. It's kind of razor, razor close for a budget our size for, you know, the month of February here. So as we had been talking about, if you look back to previous years, you know, this is as, as close as we've come. You know, we're continuing to evaluate the situation every month and, you know, we remain in a free situation for most budget areas so that, you know, we can make sure we get to the end of the year, you know, in the green, which is, you know, what we're doing here. We have some grants that are coming in. I just completed some grants this month, so there should be some money coming back. But it's not gonna get a whole lot higher than that as we get through the rest of the year. So we're gonna see it kind of being in this sort of zone where it dips down and up and down and up, you know, till we get to the end. So I don't really anticipate a whole lot changing there, or I don't, I also don't anticipate a lot of that being left over for any kind of educational reserve on transfer this year. We'll see, but I doubt it. Speaking of that, in the next meeting, we will be, since we are now entering for in the zone of the third quarter of the financial year, we will be making that request from last year's transfer money from the ERF, which the audit has to be complete before that money can be transferred. So that'll be something we'll be talking about potentially. But for the end of this year, I don't anticipate us being, you know, at a point where there'll be a whole lot to do that with. Going through some of the bigger items or the highlights here. Substitute, which is code M, I'll try to stick to the, to the biggest things. You know, as you might imagine, salaries is under, you know, we don't extend that until we get to the full end there. Substitutes are under by 7,000. We're gonna continue to, to expand that. Stipends over by 37, because there are some changes, you know, and that does happen. In department liaisons, team leaders, athletic coaches, curriculum's in that category. And so, you know, when we have people end up coming in that have more than five years of experience, it can, it can change the compensation rate for them. So there's a bit of a change there on that one. Health, life, disability insurance is over by 62. Vacancies continue to impact that amount. They're not paying in, so if you have a vacancy and it's not paying in, there's gonna be a little bit of an overage there because it's money we're not collecting. You know, and so we'll see that go up and down a bit. We do have, you know, retirees come in at the end of the year. And so they have a financial impact of about 8,000 there. And so we'll see how that affects us as we get towards the end of the year. Another cause that this account can be over is just, as I said, just not the money we're not collecting. See, just go through, legal audit consultation, over by about eight. It's special education, teacher contract negotiation changes. There was one contract in particular, but also, you know, that tends to be where we spend that money. We don't have that coming up in the next few years as much, so, you know, we won't have the, the big unions coming up next year. But this year, at the beginning, we did. Tech services, over by about 54. A lot of these online services can fluctuate in cost, and so they're a little higher than what we had anticipated for the same subscription, and that's what happens sometimes. So that's gonna be balanced by some of the other lines that might be underspent, but that's gonna affect us a bit. Transportation is over budget, as we talked about, by 464,000. Last month, it was 318,000. You know, that has to do with the fluctuations, we have McKinney Vento. Some are coming, some may be coming off, which may affect us in a good direction. Next month, as we resolve some of the McKinney Vento issues, you also are aware, we had a hearing for some of you that were involved. Those are efforts to kind of get that, some of that ended. And so where, where it's, where it is reasonable to do so. So we're going to see how that affects it in the next couple of months. But that has affected some of our overage this year's running some of those transports. And that is required by law for families that are in that situation. Advertising is a little over because we've been doing a lot of advertising, as you might imagine. Tuition is over budget, 289,000. It's due to the additional outplacements right now, and that does fluctuate. And so we'll see how that comes in at the end of the year. And so that's, those are most of the big ones. See, I mean, other ones, there's $171 in another place, that would be a good for, for us. But those are some of the bigger ones, bigger changes.
Thank you, Dr. Will. Okay, just a quick question, line 360, and forgive me if I'm just blanking here, parent activity. Is that, am I going crazy, or is that a new, that's, I, I, I don't know. I'm not recognizing that line from before. Line 360 on this sheet here. Is that new? This could be a very stupid question as well, and more so, I, I do not recall ever seeing this.
Yeah, I mean, I'll have to, I'll look into, that might be money that was moved over from another budget area. I'm just noticing that too long ago. It's how it comes out of IV, and that's kind of interesting. So let me, I can get an answer for that.
No problem.
Thank you. And nothing is expended, so it must have been, sometimes when we change the codes, it'll add new, you know, because this is a roll up, so let me try to find that one.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Yes, I feel like trying to remember what that could be, but it'll come to me.
It's a small number, 2,000, I don't, well. Any other question? All right, thank you, Dr. Willis. Item L two, healthy food certification.
Okay, so you remember this, every year, we do a healthy food certification authorization. And this healthy food certification allows us to get reimbursement from the state. But the board has to approve, and there's two sections to it. The board has to approve, it's in tiny little writing here, so I'm trying to give you the you can, you can also blow it up more in your own, your your own computers there. But there are two considerations for, and both of them have to be authorized by the board. Basically, the healthy food option, we can't sell anything other than the USDA healthy foods during the school day. So for instance, we can't offer pizza, if people can't order pizza, if people can't bring in things that will compete with the healthy foods program or not be healthy. And so we have to make sure that, you know, that we aren't offering alternative items that are not considered under the USDA to be healthy food and that would compete with the meal program that's being subsidized, that's for being, you know, we're being paid to provide, right? So it has to live up to the Connecticut nutrition standards, and we have to say that we're accepting that. Second thing is exemption for food and beverage items. You know, we will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet these standards, but the sale has to be for an event occurring after the end of the regular school day. It has to be at the location of the event, and it cannot be sold from a vending machine or from the school store. And what that does is that provides us the ability to allow, you know, the PTOs or boosters to, to sell their items. But they can only do that outside of the, this school day and not from our school store, you know, that so when you see them set up a table, you know, over by, you know, by whatever is the organized activity or sport is, that's where they'd have to do it. They can't do it from our vending machines or from our school stores or from our cafeteria. And it has to be outside of the school day. So we agree not to sell anything during the school day that doesn't hit USDA standards or takes away from it. And we allow sale only after school at the event, not on, not from our, you know, official food areas. So we agree to both of those things, which makes this motion a bit of a mouthful. But when you're ready to do it, moving into action, you have to motion to allow the superintendent to support and authorize the healthy food certification and to allow for the exemption of food and beverage items as well as other provisions as indicated in considerations one and two, and one and two are below it. So you don't have to read the whole thing, but you do have to say that you accept the whole thing. At least that you'd be putting the whole thing in there.
So just for, just for clarity sake, what happens if this is not accepted?
We lose the funding that we would receive for the lunches. Right now, we get approximately 10 cents per lunch. So the program raised last year like 18,802 in the 21, 22 year, and it always goes to, they look at two years behind for some reason. They always make our figures and our reimbursements for two years. So right now, the data that they pulled is not from last year, but it's from the year before, and it's just how they do it. That's, and we get reimbursements from two years back. It's always a cycle like that.
So where do these reimbursement funds go? Or is this, is the lunch discount the 10 cents per child per lunch? And if it was denied, they would raise 10 cents? How is the funding aspect?
It goes back into the meal program to offset the cost of the meal program, which ultimately lowers the cost of the lunches themselves overall.
All right.
Yeah, and we have an independent program. So it's not part of the operating budget. It's self-funded, and it doesn't cost the district anything, which is good. I mean, it doesn't cost, you know, our operating budget.
So this subcontract that people are receiving, the 18, eight, is that correct?
Yeah, it goes right back into the, the money that the school program, the program spends. And then it all, if we didn't do this, we'd have to find that elsewhere, which means, you know.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying the funding on this, that's all.
Yeah.
It's something that saves families money, but doesn't seem much as the case.
Well, it does, it does, because it goes back into the food program and offsets the overall cost, which does save the we have a lot more flexibility in helping families because we do stuff like that, and we're self-funded, self-managed. So some, some districts will go pay an outside entity to come in, and then you have very little control. It ends up being something you contract out for. But we do a couple of things in this district that really help, I think, you know, keep those prices low or well managed. One of them is this, is the food service, another one is the Family Resource Center, also another self-funded program.
Yes.
You know, and we, we also can, we get sometimes grants and money back from the state. We can get different items and dishwasher, you know, sometimes you can get a dishwasher out of it. There's just stuff that we can get because we're involved.
All right, now that clears, I just was making sure that wasn't just going into the general fund, that's all.
No, actually. Exactly, it does not go into your and you don't have to move any money to this, so you don't pay anything for
No, I understand.
Other than space, you know, we're in all in the same building.
The alternative to this is third-partying it and not being able to provide what we provide with assistance and stuff. You know, we're, we're the third-party rules.
You can buy, or you can make a contract with an outside vendor to come in and, and run the lunches in the school program. But they, there's a lot less flexibility in my and, you know, during even the most challenging times, we have complete control, which was helpful. So during COVID, I mean, we had complete control over, you know, and we were able to keep that. They were able to complete, keep that program going full steam. You know, it was not easy, but it was, we shifted to lunch bag lunches very quickly because we, you know, it's our people doing the work. It was just, it's always been, in one of my, in my opinion, it's been one of the great assets of, of Talon is that you have this, you know, self-running, self-funded food program. You know, and you have a lot of leverage because of that. And the costs are lower generally because of that.
Wondered if we should ask our students about the quality of the lunches.
Yeah, I buy lunch every day, most days. So, you know, if we keep going back, it can't be that bad.
Their board, their board said meat. Well, my question was, was it gonna, do you get dairy or deli, or do you get the
Oh, I get regular. I don't, deli is stressful for me.
I feel that.
So like, you know, yeah, it's pretty good.
Yeah, I usually get just regular lunch.
I mean, the thing to keep in mind too is that if you go to Subway, you're gonna pay, you know, and I'm not, I'm not complaining about Subway, Subway's fine. Subway's great, Subway's great for the world, right? But getting a $3, you know, five, four, $4 sandwich or something, that's, you know, you don't see that in a lot of places, so it's good. But yeah, I think it's, does the job.
Reenie?
I would recommend that we move this agenda item to board action to implement the healthy food option and allow food and beverage exemption.
All right, it's a second. Okay. Discussion. All right, then, let's vote on moving this, and Dr. Willis will be item N two to board action. Jayden?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Brian? Aye. Bill?
Aye.
All right, Jen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Dana? Right. Motion passes, and we will make that item N two. Dr. Willis, new best of them, L three, Educator Diversity Plan.
So one of the many new requirements from the state. And there's, you know, a lot of things that we'd be talking about in curriculum this year, implications and other things coming next year, is that the schools have to have a diversity plan. And that, that mainly hits in your hiring, you know, to make sure that when you are doing your hiring, that you are working as hard as you can in due diligence to make sure that there is diversity in your workforce. So Public Act 23167, Section 10, school systems must have a plan submitted to the state of Connecticut increasing educator diversity. And the paragraph from the state that kind of defines it is that they need to prioritize, you know, building a teacher building a teacher workforce that reflects the demographic diversity of the state's K-12 student population and engage in data-informed continuous improvement practices. Build a teacher pipeline that attracts, repairs, supports and retains a diverse and effective workforce to ensure that each student has equitable access to teachers who can advance learning. So what generally the state has you do, and this is something that, you know, you have, that I posted to the dashboard on the eighth, I think, of March. This is gonna be hard to kind of see if you're looking at this screen because of the way we're set up here. But if, and if you look at it on your own screens, it's gonna be a lot easier. This is the state's document and we have to fill the state's document. That's why it's, it's kind of wide and it's got many, like, you know, different cells. So it is kind of hard to, to see the way we're looking at it. I would recommend that you look at it on the link in the dashboard. But there are, there are tabs that define recruitment, hiring and selection and retention. And there is a vision, a theory of action, the team lead and the team members. So our vision is to cultivate and maintain a diverse and inclusive staff through proactive recruitment strategies, equitable hiring practices and ongoing support and development. Our theory of action is, and if you're aware of what those are, it's usually an if-then statement, theories of action or multiple if-then's, right? So if we foster an environment where every individual feels valued, empowered and able to thrive, then we will enhance the educational experience of all students. And the team members that developed the plan, me, Suzanne Waterhouse, Chief Personnel Officer, Ms. Webster, Supervisor, Matt, Tom, Spontan, the principal, Dr. Patty Hess, Suzanne Gugliotta, Ms. AP at GGP and Dr. Barbara Daly Burns. And so if you click on the different tabs, you can see the, on the left, sideways here, even though I know it's hard, the goals, you'll see the goals and then you'll see the, who is going to manage the goal. And so you have to kind of turn it to your head, but increase staff diversity, looking at the first tab here for recruitment, increase, increase staff diversity over the current five percent. The few, two people working on that one are CPO and super, CPO, Stan and Superintendent. And then you can see the what, the who wants this, the by, when, the indicators of progress, the resources required, the risks and mitigation and the communication and engagement efforts. These are all required categories by the state. And so you can see how we propagated them. Probably best thing, I, you are not gonna want me to read every single thing here, so take a look at it. You know, you know, maybe, if you have already, that's fantastic, you can talk about it. But if you haven't, take a look, this is your first read of this document. We'll be bringing it back for the second meeting in March here on the twenty-seventh. I do need to get board approval to then submit this to the state. And so, you know, we've already had a number of meetings to, to develop it. We have to put it in that format. And our objective is for the state to look at it and say, we think you've made a reasonable effort here at putting something forward to increase the diversity in your workforce.
So when we do first, oh, sorry, if I do a first read, I'm strictly reading for whether or not I agree with your language, because we have to vote it through, I think that's right.
We have to approve one. So if there's something you would like us to change in language, that would be the conversation.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah. And so ultimately, this is your, your staff's best shot at making sure that we, the state is looking at what we're submitting favorably. So, you know, take a look at it, you know, remember that the objective and the state has to see that our objective is to increase that educator diversity. So there are things that we're doing to do that. If they don't think that, that what we have submitted does that, or we're being ambiguous, they might bounce that back and say, you're being too ambiguous. So, you know, this is far, knowing what we have, knowing our programs, knowing, you know, what we can leverage. This is how we would do it without increasing, you know, the cost of the district. There are programs out there that can help you increase the diversity of your workforce, but they do require certain things from the district. For instance, you know, these things don't require a material investment, but there are arrangements that you can engage in where you agree to bring in, you know, some person with diversity and you agree to pay them a certain amount of money and you agree to, after a year, hire them. And there are some things that need to be navigated because, first of all, you have to have an opening and know you have an opening. You have to fill it and then you have to get the bargaining unit to be okay with having a preordained person that is going to be in that position versus posting it or opening or allowing, you know, possible transfer or something like that. So it takes many layers to get that to work and the district has to take on the cost of the, the person coming and then has to make a pledge to after that year of kind of internship or fellowship, you have to hire them. So if you don't have that position at the end, it's breaching that agreement. So that, there are some programs out there that would, you know, get that to occur maybe faster, but it requires those kinds of arrangements and those kinds of investments. The, the, the districts that can do that kind of thing are usually the, the big districts that say, you know, we know we have four positions over here for, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five and we're gonna dedicate two of them to this fellowship and we'll grab people from here and put them in it and we'll guarantee them a job at the end of it. You know, we don't really have that kind of flexibility. So we can do what we have here, which I think the state will find acceptable.
Does this program take out of your hands the ability to hire the absolute best person for the job?
Not, no. We've, we have done this in such a way that it would not.
Okay.
You know. You know, I think is appropriate. So read through it because you'll see that, you know, we, I think, have done our best to do things that are fair and equitable, that, you know, keep, keep things within the realm of what is possible here without an investment that we can't really make monetarily.
Couple of questions, Mr. Me. On the, so on the intro slide, you put that there was, or it says something about there being minimal material costs and small logistical costs for transportation, I can say. Have those already been anticipated in future budget requests?
Because they are, you know, minimal, that we'll be able to absorb them. For instance, we might have to drive farther. You know, if we're gonna go do recruitment at college fairs, you know, we might not, we may not do just UConn's, you know, or Central, we might drive to another state, you know. And that would just take mileage. There's, there's not gonna be, that's why it's logistics and it's material, it'd be more materials. We should be able to absorb that in our efforts. You may say, see a minor overage between now and next year, because this is, this is coming up when it's coming up. But it's designed to be something that we would be able to absorb that is not gonna break our business.
That's second question, you know. Assuming this is approved and sent to the state and that the state chooses, finds it acceptable, do they have some sort of timeframe or feedback loop where they come back and make sure you're doing these things or?
Well, no, we, we don't know yet, maybe.
The state kind of chooses what it wants to respond to and what it doesn't. We could not hear from them ever again. Or we could have them reaching out to help us. And it depends on, on whether we've made, you know, or there were the nail that hasn't been fully nailed down. Generally, everybody's trying to make sure you're not the nail that hasn't, you know, there's only so much energy they have and you don't wanna, you don't wanna make yourself the nail that needs to be nailed down. So I think we've done that. But it, it could be they review and come back with feedback. I don't think so. I think they just wanna make sure that we are compliant. The federal government does its own thing. So for instance, we have something called the CDRC right now. Massive time span, time suck, but, you know, I understand the reason for it. They want us to go back to twenty-one, twenty-two and look at, you know, a lot of data points and all the, all of, and this isn't just us, it's everywhere. And determine the, the race of people that were expelled. That, you know, and all that. So we have to go back years, figure out who was, figure out what the race was and then put it in a, in a federal database. And so they did, that, you know, that's not something unique to us, but out of nowhere, you know. Oh, by the way, this year we want you to do this. And it's, it's not just for last year, it could be easier, it's for many years back. And so it comes up out of nowhere sometimes and, you know, we'll do our best and it changes with different administrations. So this is in the same general genre of, you know, diversity and making sure that, you know, certain groups are represented. So they may come back, but it may be a federal thing at some point that they come back and, and ask for more. Not sure.
And lastly, and I know we have a few policies that, that cover diversity. Does this plan take those into account or will we need to cycle around and look at those to make sure they align?
So far, it seems like they're aligning okay, because we have non-discrimination policies. You can't say someone, you know, you can't discriminate against someone based, based on. So this just says pretty much that we won't and that we'll be active in making sure everybody's got a fair shot, which is really just more underlining it more heavily than it is actually changing anything. And you'll see as you go through it, you know, that's the purpose of it. And I think that's, and then, you know, you see the retention tab. When we do get individuals who are diverse, how do we make sure we keep them? You know, these will be our efforts.
All right. Thank you, sir. And as mentioned at the beginning, Senator Gordon will not be here during this meeting. So moving on, board action, item N one, Board of Education goal. Right, so. Trying to.
So you remember that the final process in the Board of Education goal setting? And again, this will be easier for you to see on your own machines versus some of what we're displaying here, because the monitor's gonna make it a little small. So what I'd recommend is, you know, going in and grabbing that from, you know, from the dashboard. You'll notice that across the top really is, you know, how, and what your expectations would be of yourselves, me, for each of the goals. And it's, you know, how do we, for each goal, set their expectations, what are our greatest hopes for the district in this area? How do we create conditions for success? You know, what are we willing to support to ensure that the expectations are met? System accountability for each goal, you know, what is the recommended evidence? What are some outcomes that we wanna see to say that, you know, yes, that was achieved? And then how do we build public support for each of these goals? You know, what will we need to do to gain community support for it? And this is under the cave model of goal setting. So as you recall, in the last meeting, now there was a decision made that each of the board members would submit their thoughts to this via form. And then those thoughts were gonna be pulled. Understandably, there are people that, you know, busy, crazy things going on, week is short, lots of work. So a lot of these came in, you know, at the, that actually lasts an hour. So I did get all of them in here. I think I got everybody's stuff in here. I was watching it pop in as I was getting ready. But it's all there. So this represents, as far as I can tell, everyone's, everyone's stuff. And so, you know, when I walked over, so this is your own feedback to each of these. And what we can do is just to kind of ponder and consider it. I did not get a chance to summarize it because most, a lot of it was coming in, you know. You know, and when it, when it could come in. So I can either modify parts of it now based on your feedback or I can summarize it for you in the next meeting. Or you could leave it as this, because this is how each of you felt about what we should be looking for. This general theme here, most of you are in the same general domain. So I don't think anyone's gonna really hate what anyone else put in there. So let me know what you want, you know, take a look at it, read it. I know this is your first time seeing what everybody put in, but, you know, that's because we were gonna do that here. And if you wanna, I can summarize it or you can leave it as is or you can modify some part of it, Jim.
As, as I was scrolling through, I did see some overlap. So I would probably lean towards if we can summarize it, if you could take a stab at it, in my opinion. And then just kind of. Any last minute tweaks from there?
I agree.
Dan, were you done, sorry?
Yeah.
I agree with Dan.
Awesome. Is that, they figured out that?
I think it's a lot for us to try to go through in the meeting. I just don't think it'll be a constructive conversation. So I agree with Dan, there's a lot of overlap, so.
Any other comments?
I agree.
All right, Dr. Willitt, sounds, sounds to me like we've got a plan now. Let's go ahead and.
Okay.
Summarize. Publish it and then in the next meeting we'll do.
Summarize that for the March meeting, yeah, March twenty-second, we'll do an approval at that point.
All right, moving on to new board action item N two. Here we are back at the healthy foods.
Yeah, could you put the, the motion is a bit of a mouthful, it's not. Page fifteen. Spun it around a little, I'm trying to get it to, there we go.
I'll make a motion to allow superintendent to support and authorize the twenty-two, four, twenty-two, five, healthy food certification and to allow for the exemption of food and beverage items as well as other provisions as indicated in considerations one and two.
I will second that.
Right.
I didn't realize that, I'm sorry. I was gonna third it. Third, all right. Your zeal is a great idea, Dan.
Any, any discussion? So none. Let's vote. Jayden.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
All right, Jen.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
And Dana. Hey, we got a thumbs up. We're calling that in, I then motion back.
Can I, can I just ask something, please, really quickly? So I know when I was doing the school store in my senior year, something we had talked about was that we thought, you know, some sort of snack something would drive in more traffic during the day so that more people would buy the actual clothing items. Obviously with this, it's not very possible. I just wasn't sure if there was, if there was something that could fit into that category. If it doesn't compete with the school during the day, that could be sold in the school store. But if it's being sold in the school store, it's competing with the cafeteria. So I'm not sure if that can be a discussion at the state level. I'm not sure who has had those conversations. But again, I, I still believe that if, if there would be more foot traffic going in and out of the store, if we offered some sort of, you know, unique sort of snack or something in that store, so. But obviously, it's just not feasible with, with these provisions here. So I just wanted to throw that, throw that out there, because it was a conversation when I was there about five years ago. It's not that long. It's just so weird. You know, well, that's what I'm, right. And so, you know, how does that get measured? I, I don't know. So, but it has been a topic of conversation before. And so I'd be curious to see if it's still being inquired about.
Yeah, it is, it's pretty rigid now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can give it, we can give weeples.
Sorry?
Weeples, weeples were suggested.
So can you have like gum or, you know?
It's pretty rigid. Every time things have come up, it's gonna.
Because gum is not like a, you know, something that you're eating, it's.
Caramel apples. I mean, sugar, it's a sugar, sugar substitute, all of that stuff, they don't look at, that's healthy. But we'll, you know, anytime, we will explore anything any student brings up, because if we can, why not? But generally, it, it, for years, each time we've asked, it's been no. And then nobody wants to really mess with it.
Right.
So generally, it's, it's been. Yeah, but that doesn't mean it can't be something. Yeah, but that doesn't mean it can't be someday. We'll keep asking.
What about before the bell rings and after the bell rings?
Well.
My school store has those, so honey buns, I bought them before the bell rang.
Right, honey buns would never. Yeah, honey buns have, have probably no actual feeling. No, nothing against toast is on that one, but read the back of the honey bun. You know, I think the thing about it is we do offer now the breakfast, and there's a, the span is wider now because of that. So, we didn't, you know, even the vending machines that one schools have can only offer. When we were, you know, kids, there was Coke, you know, we could buy Cokes, and you could buy honey bun, you could buy, can't, not today, not if you're part of the. No Coca-Cola.
Yeah, no, we've sold out our honey buns for approximately eighteen thousand dollars.
Can the town put a vending machine on public property outside the schools?
Not.
At the corner. At the corner. All right.
Let's move that one on. So, public participation, common sense be limited to two items on the agenda. And as always, if anybody online or in the room would like to comment, please raise your hand, and we'll be caught on. Give us your name and address. Shannon, right?
Yes, I'm at thirty-seven Birch Hill Drive. You know, I just wanted to chime in, as I've been substituting at Birch Grove, I noticed the amount of food that is thrown out. You know, many kids are buying lunches or milks, and, I mean, a lot of the teachers who are on lunch duty are going around and trying to persuade these kids to save their food if they're not eating it and bring it home. You know, have you guys considered maybe doing some kind of survey to parents for like healthy food options that they know their kids will eat? You know, I don't know, you know, how helpful that would be, but it just seems like there's so much waste going on. And I, you know, I'm not sure if there is a solution for that, but, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there, because there's just a huge amount of waste happening. You know, and then the kids are hungry later, and they're asking their teachers for snacks, you know, and then they're just loading up on junk.
Thank you. We know that. That explains why I occasionally punch a banana in the bottom of my.
Yeah, the help, the Food Services has done outreach and surveys, actually visited the schools, asked the kids, they've done a couple of things like that. And the challenge is USDA is very strict, and so you have to offer, even with milk, you can't give it away if it's not used. Like, there's many, many, many rules around this. We could probably do a presentation on that at some point, just so the board gets a full understanding of what it, what it takes to provide a food lunch program that complies with the USDA. A lot of stuff there that they, that we have to offer, it may not be things, but they do try. Like, they did a thing with the kids, and they did a tasting. They've been doing tastings. I don't know if you noticed that. Last year, whatever, and the radishes were big, you know, and they did, the kids loved the radishes, and, you know, they tried to get food to, what is it, local farms to the table, and they do that. The food program is a lot of really great things like that, but they are limited on what they can provide, you know, from a.
Let's keep it on the queue as far as the presentation, upcoming agenda and communications. If the survey has already been done, maybe that's something we look into. If it has, maybe that's something that you added, that you, what you're considering, let's put that into the list then.
But just to add to that, the survey was done with the kids.
Let's do that and public participation.
Okay.
I agree. Any other public comments? Bits of information. No, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, what you were saying.
I think I just saw a handle.
Yeah, then we've done this one?
No, just read.
Oh, okay.
I was just gonna suggest, in kind of conjunction with what she was saying, I think there's a number of schools that have like the food scraps programs and things like that, where they use those in other ways. So, maybe if we can't, you know, do something else, though, like, how can we better use our leftovers and that type of a thing as opposed to just, you know, tossing them? There's a lot of schools that do that, I think. So, we can maybe look into that.
Yeah, anything you want me to look into. Great, I like that. Like I said, I, it never quite occurred to me why I would get food brought home occasionally. Normally, it's the banana she forgets to tell me about.
We'll have to look into some of the ones. I've read about some of them.
That would be great.
Maybe recycle and, you know, use them for other things and that type of.
Ideas we could bring back.
The kids participate in that, where they've got a couple of different barrels. We put this that can be, you know, recycling, things like that. Not just recycled plastic, I mean, but I'm talking the food stuff, the scraps, and the kids are great about sorting it and stuff like that, so.
It's great, happy to get them into. Yeah, no, I'll ask him, and, and maybe if you can, anything you can look up.
Yeah, I'll see what I can find out.
Awesome, thank you. That sounds good. All right, other, what is your information? All right, future business, Dr. Will, we have another.
You do, so March twenty-second, you have, you have a Birch Grove visit for math, math programming. And so far, we have two people signed up. Love to have more if you're interested. Obviously, you know, the nature of instructional rounds is they do have to be during the day, because you're actually going in and watching instruction, talking to teachers and so on, and that's in the morning. So, same thing, it's about two and a half hours per hour, you're in, you're out, going to classrooms, you talk to teachers, see the kids. Then there's a debrief afterwards, ask whatever you want. So, it's on your dashboard, and it's also, you know, out there in a couple of ways. So, please, if you're interested, we'd love to have you, and so, like I said, we have two of you right now. Hope to have more. The sooner you can let me know, the better, because we, you know, we have, we have to prepare how many packets we're gonna send out.
Well, what was it? Start with the date of that account?
It's March twenty.
Friday.
Yeah, and there's, on the dashboard, you can click on the signup link, and then you can sign up for all of them.
It starts at nine, you say?
Into the future. I think that one, it's around that.
Yeah, I think it goes like nine-thirty to twelve-thirty or something like that.
Yeah, and that's, that's about right, because it'll be after the initial.
Yeah.
If we filled out the original form, now, my plan is to attend on four, the one, the TMS one got moved, so I couldn't attend to that one. If we originally filled out that, that form that we were sent, I wanna say back in February or January, sometime around there, is that still stand? Our, our information still stand that we want to attend on this date?
Oh, definitely. It does, it does. I'm just, when I'm looking at it right now, I see two people signed up for it. And neither one of them is you.
If you wanna sign up, I would love that. I'd love to add you to that one.
No, your information was not again.
Yeah, that's, that part. That doesn't mean, sometimes, sometimes things happen with the internet, so.
But if you wanted, then we would have three people coming, which is fantastic and exciting. It is nine-thirty to twelve-thirty, and it's mathematics, instruction, and programming, and it's really.
Dr. Will, there's a very strong chance that the two people that have signed up don't remember they are the.
Right, all right.
Hopefully, they say their names or.
So, right now, I miss old Bo and Bodhi and Miss Galician. Mr. Bodhi and Miss Galician.
So, I have a feeling you'll get at least six more today.
Excellent. We'd love it. We'd love it. It's awesome. It's a lot of really informative.
All right, that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Jane?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Dana? Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.